You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 17th meeting for the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
All right, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the September 17th meeting for the Michigan City Social Status on African American Males. I apologize, we are a week late this month. That was on me, and we won't let that happen again, so start next month, we'll go back to the second Wednesday of the month meeting. So first thing on today's agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next is roll call.
Nick Pollak.
Present.
Robert Johnson. Fay Moore, present. Laquilla Cooper.
She is working.
Excuse.
Mm-hmm.
Stacy Bennett.
Same, she's busy at work.
Dwayne Passahert.
Doctor.
Mike Jones.
Here.
Danny Armstrong.
Present.
Tony Cox.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
Commissioner Williams, here. Maquette, Kay, Maquette, Haya, Alway.
I did not hear from him.
Joseph Nelson.
Present.
We have a form of seven.
I did, right before the meeting, I got the previous meeting minutes, so I didn't have a chance to share them with everybody, so we can table the approval of August meeting minutes until next month. If everybody's all right with that, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve?
Same.
I got a motion as second to table August meeting minutes until next month, so everybody gets a copy and can look at them. Prior to voting, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Treasurer report, did you get a copy?
I do, and I have.
So I stopped in yesterday, and they were supposed to email you and I. I didn't see the email come through, so I think we'll just go ahead and table the treasurer's report till next month as well. Is there a motion to table the treasurer's report to approve?
Second.
All right, I'm motion as second to table the treasurer's report until next month, so everybody could get a chance to get a copy and look it over. Prior to voting on it, are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Moving on to old business, the only thing I had under old business in today's agenda was the letter to the city council that we all discussed and approved. There's been a lot of, a lot of action at the city council meetings recently, so I chose to hold off on presenting this because there was a chance that I may have gotten up and had to speak, maybe not in favor of some things at the previous council meeting, so I didn't want to muddy the waters with that, but I think all that is hopefully going to be pretty much over.
It's not as intense as the.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to go ahead and get this submitted, and maybe we can get it on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think right now would be a good time.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just looking at things that's on the docket coming up. The next city council meeting is until next month.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And then I'll make sure.
We had our last one yesterday for the month, so.
Yep, yep.
So it's like three weeks.
And then that way, if I got to get up and speak on the, the letter, I want to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, one thing you'll be going up against is, what is it, raises for the mayor.
Oh, okay, all right, it's not too bad. So that's where we're at with that. Anybody else have any old business?
Do you have copies of that with you today?
Which, oh, yes, I do. Looks like I only have a few, but you want to share, this was the letter that was typed up. Anybody else? Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, so that's the one to be presented to President Tillman and the city council.
And right now is a good time to do it, too, and sorry, I mean, speak out of turn.
No, that's fine.
But I know what it is doing to budget.
They're doing the budget.
Okay, yep, I'll leave here and I'll go give it to the clerk and get, get it sent up. All right, any other old business? No? All right, moving on to new business. Anybody have any new business?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to speak up on the new data center that's coming out. I believe that we need to get some information going. Of course, you know, you're a union, so I'm not exactly positive when they'll be finishing that project and opening up, but my goal is to get some educated, get some kids educated to be able to work there.
Yeah.
So we know that that project's, what, two years out, a year out?
Yeah, year and a half, two years.
Okay, so right now, we need to work on figuring out, I've already been searching myself, the jobs that's going to be there, who, what type of people, for example, who's going to be employed?
Yeah.
You know, there's a, what technician, is, uh, science degrees, and of course, computer degrees, you know, but we need to get the information out there, so that when this place opens up, the people that are educated would already know and already have started the process, and the people that, of course, are not educated, we can get them the information to, so that they can get educated, for people in Indiana will work there instead of other people, like I've always preached, coming around from other states to work at our facilities. So that's all I have for that, is I want to get some information going for the data center to let people know that this place is open up. A lot of people don't even know that, or anything about it.
Yeah.
And so we need to provide that information so that these people can get either educated or at least the information, so that they know that there'll be a job coming up for them.
No, I agree 100%.
What does that look like, marketing that information, promoting that information?
Well, of course, it always starts with funding and grants or something of that nature. I, myself, would like to at least get a class going somewhere so that we can, I have options myself, I work with the Community Action Center, and we could use the facility on Michigan Boulevard to, like I said, hold meetings or at least get the information out. I haven't did the research yet, but that's my goal, to find out what positions will be available, when the place will be opening up, and what is necessary for these individuals to work there. So that's my new business that I want to get going, which is, like I said, having the data center that's here in, with Michigan City, employed by Michigan City residents.
Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, to pay the beggars, maybe go in a different way, a little bit, but not for me, but citizens out here. I understand people, we need qualified people, and your suggestion, your directive leads us to get qualified people, to get people qualified.
Exactly.
But do we have citizens? I mean, when projects like this come available, do we have a citizen say like 25% of jobs have to go to people from Michigan City?
No, I have to research that. The city does have a hiring ordinance set for contractors, so I don't know if that's included in it or not.
But as far as the end user, probably not.
It's not?
No.
So maybe that hiring ordinance needs to be amended.
Maybe we'll work toward getting citizens, getting where, you know, it's, we have, we have to, it becomes, comes upon us.
Off camera, half.
It comes upon us.
Well, you can probably amend that, I mean, you're going to do.
No, definitely, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, just, you know, just the intentions of, the foundation of the ordinance itself, where that needs, that itself needs to be enforced.
It does.
Right out the gate.
It does.
For something else to even come along to be implemented.
Well, my thing is that unless we have his portion of the baby done, then what I'm talking about is just a ghost.
Yeah, we have to.
We have to get qualified people to put into the citizen position.
For sure.
Saying, yeah, so.
But that's not a bad thought, though. That's not, that's definitely something to keep on the forefront, though.
Well, yeah, sorry not to cut you off, but I don't, I mean, it's not even for the Michigan City data center, I mean, we've got multiple buildings in New Carlow right now, they're talking about building one in LaPorte, they're talking about, I mean.
Is it Carlow?
Yeah. No, it's St. Joe County, but with it being in proximity, I mean, I think it would be smart of Michigan City to maybe take that initiative.
Something going to have a, a spot, a hole where these people can at least come to and get the information, and not only get the information, like I said, me, myself, as an instructor, whoever, we can also get other instructors for the different positions necessary to get these people educated.
Yes.
So we need to get a class going, we need to get a, some spot where, like I said, I can hold a meeting myself, let me work on this, but that's something I want to put on the table, then, of course, education. Educating the community.
And maybe potentially getting with the end user, too, to see, because I myself been looking at different positions within a data center and requirements, and most of them definitely require some form of higher education certification. I think it'd be good to go with the end user and see, you know, build their relationship.
Back into it?
Build their relationship, kind of like what you were saying, you know, without necessarily being forced, you know.
At the same time, we have to go to two fronts, we have to make certain that we have somebody, if we go and try to influence our hiring policy, and we don't have anybody to be hired, then we're just blowing smoke.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so his theory, his project should be at the forefront, so that, you know, we can go and battle the fight and say, yes, we need, we need, we want, we demand, okay, fine, come on, but wait a minute, I don't really have a coffee for you right now.
But to be honest with you.
And I'll be back.
And to be honest with you, and not to, you know, overreach, I think we have some qualified people here in the city.
Yeah, but we do, we said.
We have some, we have to, exactly, that's why.
We have to pinpoint them, so we have them.
Yeah, so when I've looked up so far, the common data center employee roles, data center technician responsibility is for monitoring, supporting, maintaining hardware, troubleshooting, database, and networking issues, and reporting to the outstages. Engineers, electrical mechanics, facility designs, implements, and maintain, and structures such as power distribution, cooling, and other facility systems. Like I said, this one would require more research, and like I said, getting the information out there, figuring out what's, what's up and coming and what's going to be necessary before it happens, you know? Like you said, there's plenty of other projects also that's going up, so.
No, I like it.
I'm out here in the community, and a lot of people don't know about it.
Wow.
We have a lot of people, a lot of students who are not, not educated, GEDs, all of that, and that does not give them the position to work at this place.
This, I don't know, it's always, I don't know, I just know, I want to speak from my era, I didn't know anything about computers, and like watching my uncle, watching him like play with computers and travel, and I'm like, I like what he doing, I want to do that, like, that's what inspires me. It wasn't nothing that I, somebody said in school, once I seen him doing it, then when I came back to school, maybe the following after the summer, I'm like, okay, let me position myself in AK Smith program, with software and hardware programs, but, yeah, I would, I would be, I would be, I would be, I would like to see what they already have and play right now at the school, steep on data centers, like up and coming technology, AI technologies, and things like that, as far as introducing the kids, besides what you trying to do, too.
Correct.
Where they already be putting that in their head, I think.
Coding and.
Yeah. What type of stuff they're doing right now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, I like it, I'm obviously 100% for workforce development, and it's, it's good to have that foresight. The good thing is, we have 18 to 24 months, right? So there's time to do a little research and get some implemented, hopefully, and get some of that training or certifications that are going to be required. To go off of that even more, none of that happens without the building being built, and you need the construction workers first and foremost, right? And I can honestly say that we do have a couple local, I mean, when I say local, I mean Michigan City contractors on that job currently, that are employing Michigan City residents, good paying union jobs that are out there right now. I know there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about the data center, and there may have been some misinformation put out there, or some, some confusion, but I know for a fact that there are union carpenters working on that job, union electricians, union bricklayers, and union plumbers. And as far as the carpenters go, I know I've actually placed some Michigan City residents on that job. When I ran on Michigan City residents, I went to LaPorte County residents next. Last count, I knew there were nine carpenters on the job, so just clear that up, and that's good, that's what we want.
That's good information to know.
Yeah.
And I think the masses should know that instead of like in a closed room, I don't know, I mean, we'll actually sit and watch this, but I could kind of piggyback what me and you was talking about, where it's like, you know, people don't listen to the radio, people don't reach out for certain sources of information, so they'd never know that.
Yep.
To be honest, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
As far as the exact count, like I knew there was certain groups out there, but far as an exact count.
Yeah.
And like being next to somebody that's actually been out there, sent somebody out there, I used to be the first.
Yep.
So that's good, that's what.
I just, you know, and it's, I'm not saying that what the other trades are fighting for is, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, that's what they need to do for their members, but I've got members working on that job.
In total, how many, what you say?
Last I heard, there was like eight bricklayers, nine carpenters, I didn't get a number on the electricians or the plumbers, so there's probably over 20 local union tradespeople working on that job.
What percentage is Michigan City?
Um, I can't, I don't know about the other trades, I don't know, yeah.
On a, excuse me, on a job of that nature, how many personnel is needed?
Total, well, the ones that I could compare to are the, the data centers in New Carlow there right now, they could have a couple hundred people on one building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's, there's going to be a huge opportunity out there, for sure, yeah.
It's a better picture.
Mm-hmm, so, but like you said, you know, like Commissioner Cox said, you know, you can go and fight for all the work, but if you don't have the, the workers to give them to do the work, then the points move, right? Well, so that, that's going to be very important for anybody that's, you know, going out there, you're going to have.
That's why I come in, and we get these kids educated, or getting the information out there to the people that are available, that has the education for that project.
And I would have to imagine these are going to be good, living wage paying jobs at the data center, so it'll be great for Michigan City residents.
And for a nice duration of time, too.
Yeah.
And once completed with the Michigan City, then they can go next door neighbor, LaPorte, and get theirs.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because LaPorte is going to have one, too.
And it could all start right here.
Right. The great thing is, though, once they get in, and they get the card, then they're done, and they in, you know, they can, they can go wherever they want to to work.
Yeah. At that point, it's on the end user to make sure they're compensating them properly.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, all right, good, I like it. I got that in my notes, I'll see what I can, I'll do a little research myself, and see what I can find out, maybe I can reach out to some people and see exactly what kind of positions they're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I've been out there myself, I've seen the different sides of the union gate, non-union, and all that, and so I, you already know I'm union myself, whereas, but I know you with the project, so I'll, I'll be doing the same.
Okay.
We'll collaborate together.
Awesome. All right, any other new business?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at our last meeting, we were discussing the funds that we were going to receive from the city, the three.
Yeah.
And I think at that time, we was discussing, BJ was one, there was two other ones, the one that I had questioned was the funds for the neighborhoods, and I mentioned that a councilman on the city council is spearheading that cleanup program.
Yeah.
And Mr. Nelson, that would be you, correct? So if we get those funds, we have someone on our board that can help direct it.
Yeah, okay.
That's all, the funds.
Neighborhood, neighborhood, yeah, city's going to give.
Each board, in connection.
Yes, 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 yes.
We're going to split.
Y'all filled that out, and.
I've only spoken to the mayor about it, I haven't submitted.
Right, okay, was there a deadline for that?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, I would, I would check into that, because I know, for the urban enterprise, we submitted ours.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not concrete about if there's a deadline, but I, I can only imagine that is, but, yes, I know.
Which is why I'm glad you're today's attendance, so we figure what, a thousand of that, three, could be for neighborhood cleanup, which you spearheads for the city, right?
Yes, yes, adopt a street, yeah.
So we have somebody on our board that.
Yes.
That part is taken care of.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, because it's got to be for certain things, right?
Right.
Yes, yeah.
But don't you have to submit a proposal to get the money?
Yeah, so I've spoken.
So who's doing that, you submitted it?
Yeah, well, I've spoken about it, yeah.
But what's submitted, we have it, because they want to know what you're going to do with it.
Yeah, that's what.
With ours, BJ was one of them, and this would be the second one, and we still have one more.
What was this, what's it, BJ?
BJ Ashley Scholarship Fund.
Fund.
It's already set up through the social status. And you're, would be number two, but we.
What was the third criteria, what's the other one?
Do you remember last month's meeting?
I know it's like two or three different criterias, if I'm not mistaken, of what you picked, or what you. What falls under the umbrella of being used? I forgot all about that.
You got a blank on that.
All about that, to be honest.
Or was that the one we was going to decide on?
Yeah, if we're talking about education.
Right.
That was a scholarship.
That was a scholarship, and this was.
Oh, you mean workforce development? Yes.
What about some type of job?
Exactly, towards core, or some, you know.
So now that we got the three usages, we need to put it in writing and get it to, okay. Especially since we got the warning of the deadline.
Yes, I'm, I'm, because I know, yeah, me, Dakota, Tristan, the members, we, they put together one, and, yeah.
I see a date for like when the work, like when it needs to be completed, by March 15th of 2026, but I, I'm.
All right, so we're saying the BJ.
I'll go check with Kelly, if you don't, you know, whichever one of us reaches her first.
I'll go there right after the meeting.
Okay, yeah, but that's who sent the initial email out, so I would imagine she has all the parameters.
But the bottom line, we have the three areas covered. Neighborhood clean, core, and BJ Ashley. Am I correct on that? That's the three.
BJ Ashley sounds so.
Can we vote on that then?
Yeah.
They said it'd be for the record?
Mm-hmm, and then.
So with that being said, I make a motion that the three areas for the funding that we will be receiving be designated for neighborhood clean, with Councilman Nelson, BJ Ashley Scholarship Program, and Workforce Development with Core.
Second.
All right, I got a motion as second on the floor for the, the grant from the city to be divvied up between the BJ Ashley Scholarship, Neighborhood Cleanups, and Workforce Development, Core Curriculum. Are there any questions on the motion?
Question, if you want a second.
Yeah.
You said divvy up?
Do we want to set it, do we, do we want to set it three equal?
Well, because like, Work Development sounds just as important, or more important to me, as a scholarship.
Yeah.
But we have, we have funding in our account already, this is just the three that's been identified from the city, so if we need more, we still have an avenue to tap into.
So you don't want to really set a dollar amount to each individual?
Well, a thousand would be fair, because it's three, right? Anything needed over that, we have a funding.
Okay.
Is that scholarship going to go to one person, how's that going to work? Just out of, just out of question.
Come to our organization. Huh? It's designated to come to our organization, am I correct?
They said, they said, they said, they said, recipience to the scholarship.
How many people, is that for one person?
A thousand, no, you got, can't get.
No, it's for one organization, and we decided to divide it into three areas.
No, I know. BJ Ashley Scholarship, does that go to one recipient?
Yeah.
It was in the past that they received a thousand dollars.
I mean, you don't get, that, that's going to get you in preschool. Get you there, get you to preschool.
But keep in mind, just for the, for the record, though, the Ashley Foundation was kicking in also, Fay, am I correct?
They said you were discussing it, the last I heard.
Why?
We were just like a partial.
A partial what?
Funding for the scholarship.
No, it, it was whatever money was in the, others were supposed to be making donations towards the scholarship.
That's what I'm saying.
We never seen y'all.
But like, I went to the city to make a donation towards the scholarship, and the girl didn't know what to do, or how to do.
But if I recall.
What was this?
It was about three months ago, I was at the desk at the controller's office, I told him I wanted to make a donation towards the BJ Ashley Scholarship, and she was like, she didn't know nothing about it, number one, number two, I told, it's on the commission, Social Status Commission website. And so then she said, well, I suppose you could just write a check, and then put in a memo, BJ Ashley Scholarship Fund.
Excuse me, pardon me for wrong, but didn't we have Reverend Ashley out here, and they said they were taking it under advisement?
No.
Get back with us?
Well, yeah, he said he would take it under advisement as far as taking the, taking the whole program.
Oh, donating, donating, donating. They were talking about trying to, we're trying to get them to kick in.
Right.
And he said you take that under advisement.
Right.
Did we ever hear anything back?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Moore, how long has this scholarship been established?
I think it was 2016.
Okay, and initially, how did it work? Each organization boards and committees would donate to it?
No, no. It's on the, the application, and the criteria is on our website, is on the city website, under Social Status Commission. And how it was, the education committee would receive applications from males, had to be only African American males were entitled to receive the scholarship, and they would receive the applications, and then they would review the application, the education committee would review the application, and then they would come to us at one of our meetings, Social Status Commission, and let us know whom they wanted to make the donation to.
And anybody can donate?
The scholarship, who they approved it for.
Anybody can donate to it, or?
Anybody can donate to the, to the fund.
So it's worked into the budget each year, money aside for the BJ Ashley funds?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But now it's not, funds aren't, funds are not allocated each year to the, you smiling?
It was whatever we had in the, in our treasure, that the education committee would decide how much to donate, but it had been a thousand dollars, and it had only been to one African American male, and at, for each year, and if the funds got under $5,000, then we would not do it if people were not donating to other people, but it was open to anybody could donate to it.
So how?
They would have to come to City Hall, or go online to, and have.
So there was a designated.
However, City Hall receives their money.
So there was, at one point, there was a.
But the only person that I, that I know that has ever donated is Mrs. Ashley. She did donate one year, the first year we opened it, I think she did $300 or something like that.
So.
She's the only one that I've known that has ever donated to the scholarship.
Because the pastor was talking about, I think, trying to gather some other.
Donations from the congregation.
From other organizations, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we could promote, I could get some donations.
Right, but, yeah.
I just don't know what, is there, there's, does, there does not seem like there's a designated spot to bring these donations at though.
City Controller's Office.
But you just said you went down there and they didn't know what was going.
Exactly.
So that's a problem.
That's where the problem is. That's where the problem is. Sure, the City Controller's Office doesn't know what to do with the money when they get the money.
Maybe she drew a blank, maybe she drew a blank that day. Maybe she ain't heard it in a while.
Well, they had not heard it in a while because this is, remember, this was twenty twenty-five when I went to try to make the donation.
Well, regardless of.
We had not given out a, a scholarship in about, what, three, four years?
Yeah.
We were under the five thousand dollars.
Now that we have that thousand from the city, we shouldn't have to worry about it, because one is taken care of.
But we haven't gotten it yet.
But when we get it, but we're covered as far as our responsibility.
Still moving forward, we need to.
So I'm thinking about that too, you know, our ask letter to the city council is an annual five thousand dollar donation. We just automatically allocate a thousand dollars of that, so that the scholarship is funded every year moving forward.
Maybe add that in there too, I don't know.
Add what?
Maybe add that in there to the literature, I don't know where.
No, I think we, well, the way the letter reads, we are planning on um.
Or I guess more or less, you know, and just, just tell me how you feel about it, where um you kind of um ration where the money's going, or at least give some insight of what's being done with the money at the city council. Okay, I didn't read it. I just seen the five thousand.
No, no, it says. It says, request an annual contribution of five thousand dollars from the Michigan City Common Council. This funding will support our mission to improve the quality of life for African-American males through advocacy, education, mentorship, and civic engagement.
So, it falls under the education. But I can get up and speak on that specifically, maybe?
That'd be just as good.
Okay.
Because that's vague, that's vague, that's, that's, that, that covers a lot. That's just me personally sitting up there, I like to know, I guess that was my thing with the data center, where I like to know exactly where things are going. And that's just me.
Who's our chair in education?
Who's what?
Our commission's chair.
Pastor.
Pastor Hurt. Pastor Hurt, oh, okay.
Johnson's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's on there too, right?
Right.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, open up.
Alright, um, any other new business? I got a couple things. Um, first thing I have.
Hold on that for the uh.
Oh, for the dollar, yeah, so sorry, we do have a motion on the floor, um, that needs to be amended. Um, the amendment is going to be one thousand dollars to the BJ Ashley Scholarship, one thousand dollars to the Neighborhood Cleanup, and one thousand dollars to the Workforce Development. So are there any questions on the motion? Alright.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Alright, um, two things I have under new business, one, um, Commissioner Cooper, um, I've been uh communicating through email with her, she did get a job promotion, um, so her time is limited more now than it was, um, so she said that she's going to have to be stepping down as the recording secretary for the commission, so um I'm gonna be looking for a new volunteer. If somebody wants to be the new recording secretary, please let me know. Um, and then I have, I did find the old donation letter that was sent out on behalf.
And before you go there, let's, can we vote on this one? Is somebody willing to step up as a secretary? Please?
So, I, I would do it, but I have to be transparent, like I, I'm not very familiar.
With the process?
With the, so I wouldn't be so comfortable, but I have heard like there'll be like maybe classes or something like that, um, to, you know, help people to understand the process of like the boards and commissions. Like, if I could do that, then I would be, I would feel more better prepared.
Uh, you got, you got it.
Like if I don't do something correct, I just want you guys to know.
We understand.
Just let me know.
You have a private tutor, Fay?
K, K E E.
Uh, K A M.
Oh, K A M.
E E S H A.
Kind of set up. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think the important thing is to get the um, the important things notated um as far as maybe any money allocations or anything like that, any, anytime we vote on anything, that's gonna be key, to just make sure those things are in the, in the minutes. Some of the small talk, maybe not so much. So, we'll help you.
Thank you.
Um, so, with that being said, um, sounds like Commissioner Williams has stepped up, um, so can I entertain a motion to accept?
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second to have Commissioner Williams take over the recording secretary position. Any discussion on the motion? With that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, aye.
Congratulations. You get a Christmas present.
Thank you.
Make it a good one.
Pass that over next, uh, under new business, I found the old donation request letter from the commission. I did update it to, um, current information.
So that's the, that was a month before this?
Yeah, so this is a letter that's sent out to different organizations um around town to either be sponsors or to just make a donation to the commission, so this is um, this is something separate from what we're asking the city for. Um, you know, obviously, we want to be um out in the community more often, um, and doing different civic engagement, um, opportunities around town, so, you know, all that um costs money, and like uh we were, you know, talking about the bank accounts been under five thousand dollars um since I've been on the board, um, so we would like to try to build that up and uh continue to do good things around the city, so, you know, hopefully um the city can step up and help us, um, but besides that, if uh, if anybody um, you know, asks if they can help, this letter is gonna be available, I will share electronic version with everybody um so that if you need to send it electronically, it'll be available, um, plus everybody has a copy now, um, and if you need more copies, I can always make more copies if need be, so. Um, but I wanted everybody to take a look at it, see what they think. Um, before we send it out, I think we need to uh approve the updated version.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Is it a conflict of interest for a board to donate to another board, or like, example, I don't know, um, like the IBE to donate to, I don't know, an event?
I mean, is there a possibility that something could be untwore? I mean, the board that's donating, is there any way they would be looking to receive something back from us? Because we got nothing to give them?
Right.
No.
Then there's no conflict.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can give us.
No, 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 just more or less like, you know, yeah, just that they want to donate. I've just, I've, I've been on enough boards where I've seen them donate things, you know, yeah, I've seen us donate, you know, so, I'm just, I just don't know how that works far as a conflict of interest or thing, that's all.
I'm not sure, but um, that might be something that maybe Amber could answer.
Okay.
And I just hadn't encouraged him to give us the money, and we'll work through the fog later.
And what about the new grant that the mayor just wrote?
Yes, that's another good question, words like. Can we apply for stuff? We can't apply for stuff like that, being a board. I'm, no, no, I'm asking a question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the Restoring Communities Grant.
Like, we do projects, like, with, with our mission statement.
That's um between five and twenty-five thousand dollars. Between five thousand, yeah.
But from the way I read it, it didn't limit, um, it didn't say no city.
It says, it, it says um include, yeah, local organizations, including nonprofits, faith-based groups, uh, neighborhood organizations, and community partners. I feel like we fall in there somewhere.
Yeah.
I felt we did, that's why I suggested Danny to try to apply for it. But I was suggesting for him to apply for it for the whole core program.
Yeah.
On behalf of the core program as a neighborhood.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, because it.
So is that something you wanna ask about, or do you want me to ask if um?
I, yeah, if I could remember.
Yeah.
What's it called?
Restoring Community.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go um and talk to Kelly.
What is the?
Restoring Community Grant.
Please.
And it's, the applications are due by October fifteenth, so, a little less than a month.
Let's see if uh the board's available to apply for that to put back into the community. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This letter, the request for funding letter looks fine, uh, there's only two items that needs to be uh added, the time of our meetings, because you have Wednesday each month at noon, and the last line, our new recording secretary.
Right. Oh, yeah, good point.
Mm-hmm. Other than that.
So, so we need to add the time.
It, it says Sundays.
No, no, attending, attending the meeting.
Wednesday at each.
Month, uh, in the hour.
Each month at noon.
Doesn't say time, okay, at noon. And.
And a new secretary.
And a new recording secretary. That's what I've seen, anybody else see anything? Anybody else? If not, I make a motion, we accept the letter as presented with the two corrections.
Motion to approve. You said motion, a second, I'm sorry.
Alright, I got a motion and a second to approve the donation request letter with um the two changes that we just discussed, uh, any other discussion on them?
Andy, you second it?
I second.
Alright, with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Alright. Moving on to subcommittee reports, uh, first is education. Commissioner Hurt is not here, does anybody else have anything under education report?
I do, um, I sent out um a flyer to everybody in their email for a new program that's, well, yeah, a new program that's coming to Michigan City area schools, and we need mentors. Um, they will meet with the students uh once a week for up to an hour, um, just to, you know, talk companionship, leadership.
They revise into hour-for-hour program.
So it, it's.
Always different.
Yeah, it's kind of like in a, in addition to, um, because there's, they still have like the school of lunch buddies, um, but, but this is just a little different, we're kind of like goal-based, and they're just kind of to support the kids to, you know, do better, um. Yeah, so.
What schools, you say?
It's gonna be starting with Marsh and Pine. So I, I sent uh the flyer in you guys' email, um, there's a QR code there to apply, and if you need any other assistance, you can reach out to me.
When does that start?
Um, most likely next week. Uh, I meet with the schools Thursday and Friday to kind of make sure that they have like the list of students and everything, so.
Y'all got enough people for the first in a row?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, this program is already in LaPorte schools, and now they're just like bringing it, bringing it over. We expect to have about thirty students to start, um.
Not talking about the mentors, do you have?
Oh, um, no, we, no, yes, we do, we're gonna start no matter what, like the students will end up like, just like meeting with me or some of my other colleagues, and we'll just be explaining to them that we are still waiting for a match for them. Um, but in the meantime, we'll be their person.
Okay, and when is the start date, when is this meeting uh, to the start date of it?
Uh, so it'll most likely start uh September twenty-second.
Will there be training for the volunteers?
Yes, there'll be um, a training for the mentors.
Right.
And it's through uh family advocates, so.
And Commissioner Williams is a contact on here, um, she did send it to the social status email, um, so everybody should have received it, there's a um, the QR code, is that just to apply as a mentor?
Um, mentor application.
Okay.
Are there any requirements for the mentors?
Um, no, just like to be able, to be available, um, at least once a week for up to an hour. Um, it does require a background check, um, but, but that's it.
So, the school pay for a background check?
Uh, the uh family, family advocate.
Family advocates, yeah.
And is there an age limit for it?
Nope.
So eighteen-year-olds, nineteen, twenty-one?
Yeah, we're even gonna try and see like how, if we can get some high school kids, especially the ones who uh need the volunteer hours, like through the Promise Scholarship or something like that, so. It's all just.
Honor society students, I believe, need.
My daughter, she needs some, it, it doesn't, can it be, it can be young ladies too, mentors, right, or just males?
No, um, yeah, women, men, uh, old, young, all that, yeah.
Great, great, great.
We definitely would encourage like the uh students.
Yes, my daughter's a student, yes.
Those hours. That might, like, it would be fun for them too, like, the kids have somebody like, you know, not too old, somebody they feel like they can relate to and look up to, although older. Although, although older people are definitely appreciated as well. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything under education? Moving on to health. Uh, Pastor Johnson is not here in the.
Yeah, he tried to get on, he said, but he couldn't.
Okay. But the uh, the Minority Health Coalition event is this weekend at the um, Orak Temple, here in Michigan City at six PM, um, so I know we'll have representation there.
Okay, what are they gonna be doing? Well, it's just a.
So the real member pink gala, so I'm not sure, I've never attended.
You going?
No, I got kids' stuff.
Okay, and what?
But we have tickets, we have six tickets. That was Saturday the twentieth, Saturday the twentieth at six PM.
I got a wedding, I would love it, but yeah.
So, any of the board members are interested, um, tickets are in my truck, I'll grab them, and then uh if the board can't fill, we'll just whoever.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to employment.
Yes.
Commissioner Millsap.
Okay, Mr. Chair, here are the local, or better yet, county openings for employment. Uh, keep in mind, all this information is with Work One located at three seventeen Detroit Street. Uh, in this month's listing, uh, it's two pages, front and back. The bottom six locations, I'm, the bottom six slots have Michigan City employment such as machine operator, union carpenter, union cement mason, union laborer, conservation officer. Uh, check with Work One to follow up on the application process. The highest wages on this group is thirty-five dollars, so it's well worth researching if you're in need of employment. The second one is from, uh, I received numerous calls about CDL training. This is a list of all the companies that provide CDL training for anyone interested in that job. Keep in mind, this particular list is, you get paid as you learn. So uh, this would be a very valuable document to share with your family, friends, and relatives, or anyone who is interested in CDL training. The locations of, of the companies is in Gary, Hammond, Burns Harbor, Valpo, and Indianapolis. Once again, you get paid as you learn the skills of CDL driving. The next one is if you are interested in uh career in environmental, green jobs, career development. All of the information is on the document, there's a phone number to call, eight hundred number, eight hundred three seven two nine one six eight, and it will give you the directions on applying for any employment in the environmental, green jobs, career development. The last one is for electricians. Anyone who wants to join the trade of electricians. This is your contact information, there's a QR code uh that you need to follow, call, and explore any. that you need to follow, call, and explore any job skills that they have available online. And this particular document is for anyone like our chair, union, career, such as plumbers, laborers, sheet metal workers, bricklayers, electricians, iron workers. There is a website that you go to, click onto it, and it'll take you through the steps for applying for those career jobs.
Okay, I have a question on this one. It has twenty-twenty-four?
Yes, but it's still a website. They're still using the same website. And I was, it was brought to my attention that they're looking for local people to join the trade unions, and our chair can vouch for that.
Yep.
And just take these steps, once you go to the website and go through the application process to gain employment if you are interested. Questions? If not, Work One is the agency that you need to contact to get the information of all of this data that you're receiving today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Millsap. Next is criminal justice. Uh, is Stacy the chair of that?
Probably not, a smart unit, or?
No. All right, anybody have anything on criminal justice?
They have their, um, what's it called?
No, sir.
Their, ah, what conference? No, they're, like, the program where you go and you learn all about.
Two hours, shoot. Police department?
Oh, the police academy, absolutely, yeah, that, I know, um, the sign.
The neighborhood?
Yeah, it's just the police academy. It's different from the Neighborhood Leadership Academy, but it's very similar.
No, that's what I'm saying, the Neighborhood Police Academy.
Okay, yeah.
That's what it's called, I mean, that's what it was called.
Okay, well, um.
Okay, all right, thanks for coming.
Applications for that are due, I believe, the first week of October.
Right, I'm sure that's it.
Yeah.
So the Neighborhood Police Academy is an awesome program. If you have the time, it's like eight Thursdays, I guess it's still gonna be on Thursday. It's like eight Thursdays, it starts at like five-thirty, because they feed you, and then they, but they don't feed you at five-thirty. They start the program at five-thirty, but they do feed you in their program. And the food is always good by different, uh, different restaurants here in Michigan City. But you learn how the, how the police do the investigation. First, you learn about the laws and the different levels of the laws. Then you learn about, they usually have, uh, somebody from the state, like Scott P. Lab used to come in and talk about the criminal justice system in its home, about the judges and, and all that kind of stuff, probation and whatever. And then you also do an agile crime scene and how to investigate a crime scene. And you get, uh, you meet different people in the neighborhood, and you learn about each other, and, and later on, you, you know, you can, you interact with, with each other. But it's an awesome program to, I've been through it, it is really a good program to learn about what the police department actually does and what the police in Michigan City do, and you meet some of the police officers. So that also builds a morale and a better understanding of, of your community and what goes on in your community.
Thank you.
Is that open to every?
It's open to Michigan City residents.
Okay.
And the application is online.
No.
Oh, you gotta write, you gotta punch in, uh.
There's no fee, and the application is online, or you can get a paper copy at the front office at the police station.
And what's the cutoff date again?
I don't know.
You said?
I'm gonna say it's the first week of October.
Okay.
I don't know why I'm thinking October third, but I should have brought a different one.
Okay, the first week in October, so it would be October third, that Friday,
Okay.
to register for the program. And then normally it starts, like I say, on a Thursday, and it usually go for eight weeks. So it's just an eight-week commitment, and it's about four hours, I think it was. But, I mean, you get out like about eight-thirty, nine o'clock, so.
It's one night a week, but it seems like it's lots of fun.
It is, it is, it's lots of fun.
You have me sold with the food. All right, anything else under criminal justice? Uh, next, social factors?
I don't have anything, can you imagine?
All right. All right, next on the agenda would be public comment. Seeing, seeing as nobody's here from the public, we'll go to Commissioner Comment. Commissioner Armstrong?
Um, briefly, again, like I said, I just want to touch base on the up-and-coming projects. Want to get some information going for what's necessary for the next meeting. So I'm, as a follow-up, I will have some information on the data center at the next meeting.
All right.
I'm sorry, what is the project?
The data center project and the, uh, the positions that they'll have once the construction's complete, permanent positions. Commissioner Nelson?
Um, and this is a question, when do we do, when do we start doing the budgeting for next year? Far as forecasting what our intentions and our plans are gonna be? Are we gonna do it after we present this with the council?
Maybe to see if we can get more funding.
I would like to just see us, like I said, marketing and advertising a little bit more, maybe putting ourselves out there a little bit more in different spaces within the community, just to promote what we do, especially alongside with what you're trying to do in that initiative. I just think we'll have a better impact on the community with trying to do something like that.
Mm-hmm, well, to add to that, so I've, I've reached out to the city a few times about utilizing our page for social media and whatnot, and the city's website, but at the time, we were going through the transition, so it wasn't getting any traction, so I'm hoping now that the new website is done that I can continue those talks, because I'm the same as you, like, you know, like, I want to post all the stuff that, all this stuff.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, I want all this stuff to be on our page, so that the public can go there and see it, so.
Don't do what I do, I just ask for forgiveness, so.
What's that?
Then I get called, like, hey, Joseph, you can't do that, so.
You do it anyway, and then wait for the.
I wait for them, but, yeah, that's not always the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't say no.
I get my hand slapped on it, but, yeah, nevertheless, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
With the website being up, I know there's a big initiative of having, um, NSYNC information, so. I know that's been the biggest thing with this administration, making sure all accurate information is coming from one source for the most part, whether it's us bringing it down to them and them posting it.
Right.
Or, you know, giving them a heads up of what we would like to be projecting and what we're doing, but that's like the purpose of.
Yeah, and if that's the avenue we have to take, that's fine, I just want to make sure.
But even still, I like to do, yeah, I don't blame you, I'm feeling one bit.
Nope.
Also, the dumpster program for the city is at the airport. It's gonna be until the twenty-seventh of this month. It'll be on Wednesdays and Saturdays from eight to twelve.
I'm sorry, the dumpster program, what's that?
Um, that's the dumpster cleanup initiative that is being promoted by the mayor.
So it's a dumpster at the airport for furniture and?
Pretty much anything that's separate, like dry.
Instead of putting it on the sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I wanted you to say.
To minimize, yeah, to minimize that. Um, it's gonna start, you know, once we find a, um, a secure location, the plan is to move it a little bit more towards the city. As far as the dumpster goes, you gotta have an enclosed, secure spot, so people just don't go and.
Right.
floor where nobody's looking.
And.
So that's the purpose of it being at the airport right now. Wednesdays and Saturdays, um, eight to twelve, sixteen-foot box truck or less. Yeah.
Do you need to show a valid city address?
I'm almost for sure you do, I would assume you need to show.
Show what?
A city ID.
A city ID, showing that you're a resident, I wouldn't imagine.
I would, I would, I would hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hope so, so, yeah, if you don't, I will be inquiring about that.
Because if I'm not mistaken, now, if you put anything on the curb that doesn't fit in your trash bin, you have to pay for that to be picked up?
Yeah.
Right, so this is an opportunity. So.
To the camera?
So if you place large objects on the curb that are trash to be picked up, you will be charged for that if it does not fit in your bin. So this is an opportunity to take those items and dump them for free.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well said.
And I know with, um, with the Westside Neighborhood Association, we're trying to figure out a way to go to certain elderly residents that can't get that stuff to the airport, because that's, that's quite a journey to be trying to haul some stuff to the airport, I will agree on that. But nevertheless, we definitely want to encourage people to utilize the dumpster while it's out there. That way, we can minimize some of the stress on our city workers, freedom of to do other things within the city.
Mm-hmm. Good.
How long will this project be going?
Um, to twenty-seventh, no, is it twenty-seventh? I think it's the twenty-seventh of this month is the last.
Which would be a Saturday, so that would make sense.
Okay, so yeah, it's on Wednesdays, today, it'll be today, maybe this Saturday, and the twenty-seventh will be the last day. And then they regroup and put some.
Yeah, so it sounds like you got three more dates that are available to take stuff out there, so.
I think they started last Saturday, if I'm not mistaken.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Millsap?
Yeah, piggybacking off of Councilman Nelson's Neighborhood Clean Program, I figured that now that we officially has a designated thousand dollars to use for neighborhood cleanup, he has a program, maybe you can share with us, Adopt a Street?
Adopt a Street, um, it's, it's, it's pretty much, um, trying to rebuild pride and pockets of the city, especially like saturated spots of where people congregate and, you know, maybe don't clean up after themselves. So I want to encourage residents to take pride in their street, um, and then encourage people that come around in that area to do the same thing, and maybe it's contagious, is, is the, is the plan of this program. And then from there, I want to try to do some form of acknowledgement. The, the idea is, it's kind of piggybacking off what they're doing in Seattle. They're super green out there, and you have people, uh, no less than a mile and a half, where they donate their time once a week, sometimes twice a, oh, excuse me, once a month, sometimes twice a month for a minimum of the year. Um, and at that particular time, you'll be acknowledged with a sign on that street, pretty much dedicating it to you and your effort given to keeping it clean.
And the hopes is that you have your name up, saying that you.
The one lady, she put her daughter's name up, who passed away, so every time she rides home from work, she sees that sign.
But she wants to make sure it's clean and tidy.
Her and her family, they clean that section of the highway or the road or whatever.
Okay, yeah.
With that being said, at our next month's meeting, I'll bring a template of his program, so we can have Adopt a Street.
I got it, I got everything.
Okay, so, and that's where you use that one thousand to adopt that street to clean it up?
Because I only push back, I'm getting this with like the signs, acknowledgement, where it's like, okay, Joe, where you gonna get the money from? Where you gonna, um, I've already spent money out of my pocket buying tools, pickers, vests, buckets.
You talk with like repo graphics, they always like.
Me and, me and, yeah, me and him, you know, I put the, I put the idea in his ear, and he ready to do it when I'm ready. It's just, um, I was told to do it, I was, um, I was told to do it in a small, um, in a small dosage, you know, so.
And then let it grow.
And then let it grow out, catch on fire, so the initiative is really a third ward initiative, my ward that I represent.
Okay, yeah, see where it goes from there, so, okay.
At the next month's meeting, I'll bring my.
Would it be, you know, but with, with the, with the funds allocated through African-American social status, I would like, um, maybe us picking blocks or neighborhoods or streets that we would like to zone in on, and then maybe taking a weekday or a weekend, um, even giving back to the homeless, where like, I know initiative that I have, like, I, I go grab a few homeless people and I give them, you know what I'm saying, uh, um, twenty dollars per bucket to fill, or, um, just some initiative for them to come out there. And you'll be surprised how many people are, it'll be to a point where I don't have enough buckets for them to help, you know, so. I just, I don't know, I got a lot of ideas of.
I like that.
Which means buckets to fill a trash.
Yeah, the buckets, like, yeah, like a, like, you know, I got buckets from, um, where I go get that stuff from, uh, Harbor Freight.
Harbor Freight, okay.
Yeah, every bucket filled up, you know.
Ace will give it to them, give you, to you for free, too. Caitlin Ace, well, they'll give you the buckets.
Yeah, yeah, we even have a trailer, Michigan City has a trailer with this stuff stocked up, it's just that, you know.
Where's the trailer?
Um, Pat Vault, he runs it, so you can request it with him.
Where? I don't know Pat Vault.
With the city?
With the city. He runs, um, I forget what department, I'm sorry, Pat.
Park Department.
I doubt he's at the park.
Yes, Park Department, but yeah.
And he's with Pat, Pat.
Does a great job for the city, unsung hero, um, he'll bring it out to the location, um.
So you think he's with the park department?
I know.
Yes, I know he is.
Yeah, I know he is.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll bring the trailer out, it, it's full of vests, pickers, gloves, buckets, um, bags. You fill it up, put it in the trailer, they go and dump it.
That's amazing.
Perfect.
Yeah, so that's, yeah.
That's good to know.
I get that.
That's good to know, yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring it to our next meeting.
You guys could probably use him to like, um, go to the elders.
Mm-hmm.
Like, hey, can we get?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I, um, yeah, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, um, ideas with that, to be quite honest with you. It's just, um, I would like to do a two-for-one where I can kind of give back to somebody too for volunteering and helping, because I get a lot of babies that help out, or the homeless, them are people that I get to help and volunteer, so.
That's.
To be able to give them a little bit more, to have more, um, equipment to help out, uh, yeah, something like this, a thousand, yeah. I could, we could do some damage.
Yeah, that's why I said one street versus the whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
One street at a time.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, that's the game plan.
All right. Anything else? That was it. Commissioner Moore?
Oh.
You coming?
Okay, so, um, my neighborhood is Eastport Neighborhood. And, um, first of all, tonight, we are having a town hall meeting, um, at six to seven. We try to keep it right at an hour, so just give us an hour of your time. And we're at the fire training station, and we're talk, we're mostly gonna be talking about, um, our program that's gonna be Saturday, September the twenty-seventh, from eleven A.M. to one P.M. We are walking, uh, safety to, to, we're walking because we want to express safety, engagement, accessibility in our community. Join us for a brief parade demonstrating the clear need for the completion of the Walker Street sidewalks. We need sidewalks, crosswalks, lighting, and the installation of a beautiful sign marking the entrance to the Eastport Neighborhood. Our efforts will be presented to the Michigan City Board of Works by our local street smart youth. We're engaging our youth in this project. Let's help show our kids how real changes are made in Michigan City by coming out Saturday, September the twenty-seventh, eleven to one, uh, we're actually doing most of our planning tonight to complete this project on Saturday, September twenty-seventh. We also have, um, a Walker Street Garden. Uh, if you get there about twelve-thirty, you get free vegetables, fresh vegetables. Um, and if you stay there till one o'clock, we get some of the stuff from the farmer's market, fresh stuff from the farmer's market. But we also have other, um, uh, people and other gardeners in the neighborhood bring us food, fresh food, and then we have garden from our Walker Street Garden food. And, um, on September the eighteenth, Thursday, that is tomorrow? Yes, tomorrow, September the eighteenth, uh, we are having our first refresh starts with a cooking demonstration by Chef Cooper from Predictable Foods on Thursday, September the eighteenth at five P.M., that's five P.M. Join us.
Join us to get refreshed and have a demonstration of cooking fresh foods. And how to prepare them outside. Can you imagine that? Preparing fresh vegetables outside. You guys gotta come to this, five o'clock.
It was nice last year. Was that last year they did that too?
I'm sorry?
You think last year they did it?
Yes, they did it last year. Yes, yes, so so please come out, five o'clock tomorrow. And then uh tonight, tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday the twenty seventh. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um so the town hall is tonight, six o'clock, six, seven, seven?
Yes, yes, yes.
Six to seven, and that's at the water, not the water.
The fire training station on Broadway, right? You turn at McDonald's.
Got you, got you.
That for the entrance, but.
Association meeting, that's a town east side.
Town hall meeting.
Who's sponsoring that?
Who's sponsoring that?
Us.
You was adamant about that east side over there, I see. I wanna throw that out there too.
Actually Wendy Willis, our president, she's she's uh spearheading these projects.
Okay, that's cool. That's at six o'clock?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, I think that's it, yes.
Uh Commissioner Williams?
I have no comments.
All right, as well do I. No comments this week, so uh do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I got motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.